This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Dan, back me up if I can't.
You got this buddy.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, let's see if I can pull this off. Did anybody see that?
No.
Nope. Why can't I see it then and nobody else? Burn. All right, Dan, you want to pull it up if you can?
I don't think I can because I read your email this morning and said you had you're you've figured it out. So I didn't bother setting up an account.
It's funny, I've got this here and I've got the file open and why can't it, why won't it show?
Tried the show screen button. Something was happening.
Now, can you see it?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard, Paul?
Yes.
I don't know how I did it, but I did it. All right, so I'm I'm assuming I'm picking up where you left off. I I went over to questions that were chapter 275, which is pretty much with zoning, but I saw this one, but I don't think this is pertinent to us, Richard, the one about the zoning board of appeals. If you happen to see that, isn't that for them to answer? You're not, you're unmuted, Richard.
There, okay.
Did you happen to see that one? Is that is that pertain to us or is that ZBA? It looks ZBA to me.
It would be in the draft zoning by law. And it's an error in the language that is carried over into the draft we had. And so we need make, we need just acknowledge it.
So just click acknowledge, correct?
Correct.
All right. We'll go on to 275044. Check and move my, I'm having trouble trying to read the whole thing here, but wording can be served for sanitary code article 11 and additional area can be served for expansion. And all they're asking for is the change, the wording, the should that can be changed to shall be. Change can be served for expansion to can be reserved for expansion. Any comments on that?
Have any non-questions? Do you want permissive or mandatory? And I suggest, I would suggest shall be reserved.
Shall be number two.
That's my recommendation.
Okay, anybody?
Do what, do what Richard says. Easy way out, yeah.
Yes, mother.
Thank you. Look what Richard says.
Okay, we got 275045. Individual lot sizes shall be reduced, not be reduced by more than 10% below that normally required for manufacturing industrial purposes. Change manufacturing or services to manufacturing or service industrial uses. Agree with that, Richard?
Yeah, I would say yes, check change. And I'll note that we have same issue in draft we had that we had developed.
Next. At least 10% of the total tract area. They're changing the wording. And they're, they're asking to revise as they suggest. Again, I can't see the entire paragraph because for some reason or other I've got my.
The planning board draft regarding this.
Here we go.
The plan board draft regarding this has some different wording on it. And I would suggest that we put same language as did many times at last meeting. Just under revises follows, but plan, plan board will provide draft language.
So what do you want? Do you want to revise as follows and type something in here or do you want to?
Yes, yes.
Revise as follows?
Yes.
And then what would you like to say again?
Plan board will provide draft material.
Okay.
And do not hit lock. We run that last time.
Don't, don't hit the what?
Lock. If you hit lock, nobody can go back and change it. We need to.
So, so I, do I put add note to editor or no? Or just leave it the way it is?
Leave the way, leave, yeah.
Okay. Next one, 27558A, at least 80% of the lot shall be buildable land. Subject not to subject to flooding, not over 6% slope in final grade with depth. Is the word final grace correct?
No. It's supposed to be final grade.
Revised as follow, file grade?
Yes. And again, this is section that we have revised and under, you can put under. Well, actually, all you gotta do is click. Yeah, okay. Yeah, revise as follows, yeah, okay, I'm not sure why. Under, there's a place you can put discussion down here somewhere.
Yeah, show discussion.
Yeah, discussion. Yeah, right there. And I've been putting there that plan will provide a revised section on multifamily drawings.
Will provide what?
A revised section on multifamily drawings.
Is that's going to be in the affordable discussion, correct?
Yeah, but we've already made some revisions in terms of rewording of what's there. And we'll give that to them so that that can be incorporated. Because I don't think the affordable is going to be time to include in this round. It'll have to amendment next year.
Okay, is that good enough? Provide visions on multifamily?
Yes.
Okay. And I probably should save that, correct?
Yes.
All right, 275048. The removal of the following operations will be exempt from this section. And they're suggesting the removal of the following operations. We will make this correction.
Check and not acknowledged.
Acknowledged.
And the board had done extensive rewrite of the earth removal with Larry.
Right.
And I would put under discussion, the board will provide a revised section on earth removal.
Okay. Excuse me. Subsections in triplicate. Are you going to acknowledge this one, Richard?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Same as we did last point is that we've done subsidiary right and will provide that draft to them. You can just copy the language on discussion first, previous one to that one.
Revisions. Location plan at scale of one inch equals 1,000. Please confirm that the word feet should be included at the end of 27559E. A location plan at scale of one inch equals 1,000 feet revises suggested?
Yes.
Paul, good on that?
Good.
Yes.
No comment?
You can repeat the same comment. All I would do is go to previous one, copy it and paste it.
Uh, not, no. Uh, let's see here. 27559E B contains duplicative wording, the section instance of, and its implementation applies to the conversion of the abandoned site will be removed as follows, said land restoration plan and its implementation applies to the conversion of the abandoned site and its planned restoration. Acknowledged?
Yes.
Copy of the application shall be submitted to the planning board, board of public health, board of public works. Change the board of public health to board of health and change board of public works to highway superintendent. Or would you like highway department?
How it wasn't referred to in Southampton?
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. This is talking about a board, not the superintendent, right? Is there a, is there a board that Randall reports to?
No. Well, he reports to the select board, but he's, he is the highway superintendent.
But is there officially a board of public works?
No.
Some places the select board is designated as the board of public works.
Well, he reports to them as do other committees and boards in town, the select board, but there is no board per se of public works now.
Then yeah, I would suggest it be board of health and the is it bud works director, superintendent, highway superintendent? What's the official name?
Highway super.
Yeah. So they've got it right, they got it. So, will change?
Yeah, click first one, change.
But there, there's another error on that too. It's not highlighted, but we don't have a board of selectmen. We have a select board.
Yeah, now you do, right?
Right, and I think that was revised elsewhere in these, in this code revision, not necessarily in this section, but they didn't highlight that there.
So I would put it under discussion.
Select board, not board of selectmen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. No advertising on the premises other than a small non-electric sign. Blah, blah, blah. We will make the following revision to make a complete sentence. There shall be no advertising on the premises other than a small electric sign not to exceed two square feet, blah, 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 blah. You agree with that, Richard?
Acknowledged, yes.
Water supply protection district. Pick one option from a list below, include the water supply district in 275 with the following designation. Include. It does not have a designation, do not revise, defer decision until after code publication. Comment?
I would check include water supply district in 2755. And then under discussion, we'll provide a revised draft because the revised draft by the board addresses that and has a section on overlay districts specifically. Try and get as much of the revisions you've done as possible into this.
Hazardous wastes, definition of hazardous waste, we will update the reference to 40 CFR 250 and listing of hazardous waste. I'm not familiar with those terms, but acknowledged?
Yes.
Prohibited uses. Paragraph could be added to the section that reads the following uses are prohibited in the water supply protection district. Revised as suggested?
Yes.
Storage stopped playing in the manure shall be in an area which is covered in mind with U.S. Soil Conservation Service guidelines. And it's been replaced by USDA's Natural Resources Conservation Service. We will update this reference, acknowledged?
Acknowledged.
Events of compliance, Mass Department of Environmental Quality Engineering should be updated to the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, revised as suggested?
Yes.
Southampton Planning Board shall be the permit granting authority, includes a reference to S14 excess of this bylaw. It is not clear what section of the bylaw was meant by this reference. Revised to article 11 special permit conditions?
Yes. And I'll put on a discussion because the board has rewritten the special permit section completely that will provide a copy of a revised special permit section.
Extend feasible, I shall be designed to structurally accommodate the maximum number of users technically practicable. It's incomplete, as though subject to following correction could be made. Towers shall be designed to structurally accommodate the maximum number of users technically practicable. Revised as suggested?
Yes, that's my suggestion.
Discussion to provide revised? Because we, we've covered that.
We cover that. We didn't address this particular point, but I'm, I'm incorporating all their points into ours anyway. So yes, we'll provide draft of it. Anytime they address something that we had not caught, I'm taking their comments and putting into our draft.
Wireless communications districts are let's see, let's see, pick one option from the list below. Add a separate entry table under retail and service for wireless communications facilities as SPB in all districts. Change communications and television towers to radio and television towers. Revised as follows?
Yes. By special permit only in RR RN CH IP districts per revised use code, use table.
In this box or under discussion?
I put it in that box.
Here?
Yes.
Okay, repeat, Richard?
By special permit only in RR RN CH IP districts per revised use schedule.
All right. Common driveway shall be capable of providing access for emergency vehicles. The meaning of the parenthetical reference at the end of this subsection is unclear. To what does W 50 feet WB refer?
So go back, back to that, that should be WB 50. That's a type of wheel, wheel based truck. It's a, it's a reference to a national vehicle standard.
Okay.
So what, what is the section here that this refers to? Common driveway?
Driveway.
Common driveway.
Yeah, okay, yeah, WB 50.
Okay, so revise as follows. So what is it again, Paul? WB? WB 50?
Yeah, WB dash 50.
Yep.
And I think we should say and so not to create a debate on this, but I thought we had a discussion elsewhere where we coordinated with emergency response, public safety in terms of quoting with the fire department on the vehicle type. Frankly, didn't be 50 might do the trick, but it's, 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 the purpose of this is to accommodate a vehicle that is going to be suitable for response. So maybe we say WB 50 and or as required by the fire department.
Um, there's another option. Last fall, the board spent several meetings discussing common driveways. We revised the common driveway section. And this is not actually in the common driveway section that we, we, we don't have WB 50 in there. We had the language pause talking about, what we could do is say we'll provide a revised, the revised draft of the common driveway section.
I like that. So do you still want to refer to what the WB 50 so they know?
What you could do is say W, it's, it's incorrect, but it's a moot point. We, we are providing you with a revised draft of the common driveway.
So you don't, you don't want them to know what WB 50 is then, huh?
You could, but I, I think the big point is we want them to use.
Why, why, why couldn't I say like Paul did? WB 50 refers to, what was it, Paul?
Oh, well, into a vehicle type, but um, I, I think the point that we try to want to make is let's circle back to our common driveway. Because I think we went through this language before and I'm just trying to think about, I'm trying to call how we worded it, but I think it's, as Rich mentioned, it's back then that we established some language that we were all happy with, like, that pertains to this.
So I'll put down the bottom and I'll just say, see discussion below regarding the new draft, right?
Yes.
Okay. Still uncommon driveways, uh, mass highway, should mass highway requirements be changed to mass DOT requirements? Probably right, huh?
Yeah, sounds master.
Still common driveway. Except for lots approved and door prior to the adaptation of this bylaw. Revised to read except for lots approved prior to the adoption of this bylaw. Do you have a chance to look at that, Richard?
Uh, again, revise this entire section. The first issue they raised was addressed by, in, in the revised section already. The second one, uh, except for lots approved. Uh, that wasn't addressed. And I would say change to or, and I'll make that change in our draft.
So revise it per their suggestion?
Yeah. And then we'll, they'll have the copy of the revised section we've done.
Performance guarantees uncommon driveways to, let's see, change. Performance guarantees uncommon driveways to, uh, let's see, change occupancy permit to certificate of use and occupancy. Yes?
Yes.
Solar generating facilities certificate of occupancy shall be issued by building inspector. Change certificate of occupancy to certificate of use and occupancy. Okay?
Yes.
Solar generating facilities placement of system signed revised revised to read placement of system including solar or rare arrays and required appurtenances. The wording placement of system sign does not make sense. Agree?
Yes.
Solar to minimize erosion and transport of sediment. This awkward shall minimize the use and to minimize the first sentence could be amended as follows. Design shall minimize the use of concrete and other impervious materials to the greatest extent possible to minimize erosion and transport of sediment. Revised as suggested?
Yes.
Marijuana establishments. It is recognized that due to the nature of the substance cultivated in or sold by no use marijuana establishment such establishments. They have objectional operational characteristics and should be located in such a way to ensure the health, safety and general well being of the public as well as legally authorized adult customers seeking illegal purchase marijuana on use. And they're saying the wording may have objectional operational characteristics should be located. Perhaps they're making the following revisions revised?
We haven't discussed this, obviously, yes.
Same way with cannabis or marijuana marijuana. Well, let's see definition of cannabis refers to to as defined and then we will update the statutory reference acknowledged.
Yes.
Again, they're asking about. Acknowledged.
Yes.
Definition of micro business should product man your device in your product manufacturer for clarity. Revised as suggested?
Yes.
Marijuana dispensary nature of substance. Perhaps the following restrictions is recognized that due to the nature of the substance cultivation process or so. Roughly medical marijuana dispensary such dispensaries may have objectional operation characteristics located in such ways to ensure the health, safety. Revised as suggested?
Yes.
Is that it?
That's it. But I would note somewhere we should communicate to them. That. That needs to be a little bit reorganization of what they've done. It should be done some groupings such as all the supplemental in one area, but particularly. Severability clause is something that usually comes at the beginning first section or the end. They have it in the middle. Article 13 is there is severability clause and that really should be should be relocated. We now put a different section of it.
Yeah, but if this is a standard product they're using, wouldn't.
They they took they took the zoning bylaw as it was done. And severability is in the middle of what you have right now, and they simply left it there. And we we should suggest that they change that. Cause it makes no sense being where it is. It, um. And it follows. The water supply protection district and precedes the wireless communication facility. Section. It just doesn't make sense to have that article where it is.
Could you shoot off and could you do me a favor because you're in tuned with this? How is categorized?
Yeah.
I'm not. Shoot, um, Deb Tzatzinsky an email just to.
Sure.
Ask if it can be changed or is it going to stay that way? And that's the uniform code or what?
No, I'm not. I know in South Haven it's not there and I if you look at most zoning bylaws, it's not there.
Okay. All right.
So I did that very quickly.
It's great when you can just click revise as suggested, right?
And what we'll need to do is submit to Deb. Uh, the sections that we want them to look at. And what I'm doing is after the meeting, I did this at the last meeting. I did it after this meeting is take the existing sections we've drafted. Be sure their language is incorporated and then do it as PDF that or I can do it as a Word document. That we can then send to them and they can incorporate or Paul can send to them.
Yeah.
As chair.
Okay.
You should stop sharing the screen.
Uh, yeah, right. Uh, easy for you to say. Okay. Boy, I feel so confident now I could go on for hours. All right, Richard, I guess if you have nothing else to add, um, you know, anything I'll say is that. There was a communication came through from Ken Comia, this Jim Seeny from housing was asking what was going on with the affordable. So, uh, Ken is planning to meet with us the second meeting in September because he has a commitment on the first. Meeting of the first Wednesday of the month with another town, so. He's going to be coming through. We'll probably be a joint meeting with housing so we can kick off the housing topics and get that going. Richard said he spoke to him back a ways about some of the. Issues and the topics we discussed, especially things that are are real. Realistic and doable that we can get into the zoning and get the town meeting. Uh, other than that, Richard, I don't have anything else.
And I'll send you the revised the draft contract this year.
Yes, I have that and later on in our meeting, we'll. Approve that.
Okay. Well, have a good night then.
Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Take care. Bye.
Okay. Now we'll get to the agenda. In between our two week. Iatus there, there was a building permit came in Kevin Kraus at 78 former road. The disturbance was 33,000 square feet, so it was well under the threshold. So I authorized that. Got that back to the building inspector, so I'm looking for an approval for that building permit.
I move to approve based on your review.
A second. Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next I have. The board of the board of assessors left me the. Application that Mr. You remember this because we not too long ago, we did an A and R for this property up on the corner of Homer Road and Crooked Ledge. It's a. It's a notice of intent with the withdrawal of land from chapter classification. Chapter 61 and it's the Charles Fisher Living Trust.
Who's living trust?
Charles Fisher.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and it was lot four and. In the application, it's got the. There's a bunch of lots there that were actually his, I guess, for for years that were.
Do you know which side of? Uh, crooked ledge, it's.
It's right on the corner of Fomer and Crooked Ledge.
Okay, it's. So it's across the street from Alder Pond, right?
It doesn't it doesn't show it on the map that I have. I have no idea.
Hey, Dan, do you?
Yep.
Do you mind putting your, uh, mic on mute?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Picking up.
I'm sorry about that. We're all still on, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was eerily quiet.
Wait for you to talk. Um, I'm wondering Fomer and Crooked Ledge. Tell me the lot number one more time, whatever you have, Paul.
Map 27 lot six. The address is 10 Crooked Ledge.
Okay, so I'm looking at the assessor's map. And it's a big lot, 32 acres.
Here's the description of the property that he's asking to release. Release 3.165 acres from 28.9 plus or minus classified acres, 30.8 plus or minus total acres. Acreage released is located on Fomer Road, creating two separate parcels. Of 1.756 acres and 25.73 acres to remain with. 1.9 acres for a house and residual land.
Okay, so, um. You know, I am familiar with that and I will tell you Charlie Fisher has been talking to me and in terms of his, some of his other acreage. Things he's hoping to conserve, but I'm pretty sure that this is. You said Fomer Crooked Ledge, but if you were looking north. It's on the right side of the road, so the east side of the road. Of Crooked Ledge Road and you're right, we did do it. We did do like A and Rs for those those lots before. Is that right, Paul?
Yeah. So the the formality here is that to go through this process, it's just they give the they ask the planning board. Uh, to either exercise or waive your right of first refusal on this property and I'm going to recommend that we. Waive our right of first refusal on this.
I I'm going to apologize. My my lawnmower husband is right outside the window here, so I'll keep muting, but I would agree that. I would agree to your proposal that we waive our right on that.
So are you seconding him?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
All right, then I'm seconding it.
Great.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So I'm just going to send a letter off to the assessors and the select board confirming that. Um, good news, the. Town administrator sent me a letter, the board of selectmen approved $15,000 for a budget for this coming fiscal year out of ARPA funds. Uh, we couldn't get any out of the town budget because that was in tough shape, I guess, but in any event, we have 15,000. Uh, to work with so we can do some more work and hopefully complete. With the five or $6,000 that PVPC has for the affordable housing. I'm relatively sure that will be enough to get us a lot of work done, if not the whole thing. Complete at some point. Hopefully, most of it by next spring. In addition to that, Richard just sent a new contract. Or FY 23. And. I asked him to put in the contract, which he did. It's the same contract as last year with all the same rates involved. But I asked him to put in for the amount not to exceed $12,000 because I. I would prefer a little bit of a buffer there. If we have any other kind of expenditures, we we have to take care of. So. Uh, I have his contract in front of me and I have to sign it and then it's got to be approved by the town accountant. Before Richard can be. Paid again for any of his services. So I'm asking for the board's approval for his contract for FY 23 not to exceed $12,000.
I appreciate you put that cap on there. That's good.
Have a motion?
I'd make the motion to. Approve the budget for. Uh, Richard Harris not to exceed $12,000.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Cindy? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then writing on the piggyback of that. He won't be paid until the contract is approved by the accountant, but he has, uh, Richard has submitted me just a warrant. For his services for, uh, the month of July. $975. And it all had to do with E code. Uh, not only his research, but meetings. And. It was all it was all E code. So 975, so do I have a motion? For that warrant?
I I'm to cover the warrant that he submitted for the month of July 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made by Cindy and seconded by Paul. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I believe. That's it. Any reports of committees, Cindy, anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I reported the last time, Paul, and I think I did. You weren't here.
No, I was I was away the last time.
Yeah, okay, so the open space committee has been talking with. Kestrel Land Trust. We've been talking for quite a while. Kestrel Land Trust. Has done a really big push at Capital Campaign. Raised $5.5 million, which will go towards their efforts to do a large amount of. Conservation within the entire Pioneer Valley. Southampton is high on their list for land conservation, especially forested land. Uh, and I went to the Conservation Commission this recent Monday night and with Kestrel. To explain the interest Kestrel has and to. Work together to apply for a state landscape partnership grant, which is a very large and extremely complex grant. They are going to do the most of the heavy lifting for it. Um, and the idea is to minimally conserve 500 acres contiguous to contiguous. Um, and you know, in the in the heavily forested areas of our. Um, and, you know, in the, in the heavily forested areas of our, of our town. Um, it's possible that there'll be other acres attached to the grant. Um, they're probably, the nature of this kind of grant, the word partnership is an integral part of that. So the partners could include the state, it could include other municipalities like West Hampton, could include Hoyle Water Works, could include, uh, Nature Conservancy, a, a number of others that would partner with us towards the conservation. There also has come forward a private concern. I don't know if it's an individual or a, or some sort of private entity that has a good deal of money that they wish to contribute towards forest conservation. There will be a match required. Um, they know we don't have all the money in our town to match that. Um, could be up to one point two five million dollars in state grant money through this if we are awarded the grant. A lot of work between now and then. The, um, applicant from the standpoint of Southampton would have to be the Conservation Commission because that's built right into the grant language and, um, not the Open Space Committee. It could be a, a, a water protection grant, it could be an agricultural grant. So we're, we're coming up with, um, we, we've already know that there are individuals in this town who have a large amount of acreage that have started to talk to us, have attended programs, have an interest, they haven't necessarily committed, but they are interested in seeing their, their property conserved. So we're going to build on the work that's already been done. Um, so it's pretty significant. Uh, I'm frankly pretty excited about it. Got a very good thumbs up from Conservation Commission. I'm pleased that Kestrel is going to do the majority of the work in terms of, you know, completing the grant application and, you know, working with the partners. I think the work on our end is talking to landowners and, um, having them ask questions, find out if they want to participate. It's a lot of aspects to it. So it's a big project, which, our, our, our dates are to submit this grant, which is, the deadline will be May of twenty twenty-three. We've already missed the twenty twenty-two deadline, which was May of this year. Um, the actual twenty twenty-three grant application hasn't even been published, but we're, we've already, you know, communicated with the people at the state level about what it would look like, and it sounds like it's going to essentially look the same way as the previous ones. Big stuff. So we'll probably go to the select, select board in the next couple of weeks. Um, so you remember Bridget Likely, she's from Kestrel, along with Mark Wamsley. She'll probably attend the select board meeting. We'll be putting a request to be on that agenda in a couple of weeks. That's it. Big.
Interesting. Tell me, are you familiar with, uh, land up on Cold Spring that was sold for over a million dollars about a month or so ago?
No. What, what, was it a month ago?
It was over a month ago. Um, I saw the property transfer. It was pretty substantial. Um, I don't know, it was fifty, sixty acres or maybe more, but the price tag really blew me away. I
On Cold Spring Road?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I didn't. Do, do you remember anything else, like the address or the name?
No, I I didn't write it down. I didn't write it down.
It obviously didn't come out of chapter because it didn't come to our attention.
No.
There was a sale, um, Cold Spring, that's right where I live here. I, I don't know which land you mean. You can't remember anymore about that. Yeah, land is expensive.
I was told, let me see. Cold Spring goes on after Southampton Road, right? Continues on?
Um, so I believe if you, you know, were to turn the corner here at my house and go up the hill, then it forks, uh, beyond Rattle Hill and the, you take the fork to the left. That is, are you showing us, Dan?
Yeah, I just figured I was pulling the map for you guys.
Right, so it's, it's, it's between, uh, okay, so Southampton Road that goes up to outlook is, is that, isn't that Southampton Road?
Yes, yes, it is, but it's called Cold Spring for a while. You can see that on his.
Right, so it's, it's in, you see where my cursor is, it's, it's in here. It's, there's a lot on this acreage. It was at number thirty-seven.
Do you know if it's on the right or the left? It's on the Palmero Mountain side or the right side? Because that's all Richard Frary, I mean, Peter Frary, the seventy-three, those little numbers, seventy-three. That's all, um, Richard Frary's land, and if you go to the top eighty-five, I don't know what that is. I'd have to look up on my notes. Um, but you don't remember.
Eighty-five sounds familiar.
What's this we're looking at?
Sorry, it was just the details when I clicked on eighty-five. It actually means, it's the new mass mapper.
Okay, so where did you read that? In the, um?
It was, it was in the property, yeah, it was in the property transfers in the Gazette.
In the Gazette or the reminder?
No, Gazette. Well, it would be on there too. They all have them.
Okay, so the answer is no, I didn't. I happen to have the last Gazette here, so maybe I'll look. You think it was more than a month ago though, huh?
Yeah, four to six weeks back, maybe eight weeks, but anyway, I just didn't know if you, you had known about it because it was, you don't see many properties, you know, with over a million dollar price tag on them.
Well, I will tell you, um, without mentioning names, I know of an appraisal that occurred on some property. It was a neat twenty-five acres and it was seven hundred and fifty thousand. So go figure, you know, it's the times.
Well, anyway, anything else to, um, add? Or shall we call it a night? Thanks for, uh, hanging in there on these questions. I don't know, um, how laborious it was the last time. Um, it seemed to flow pretty, pretty smoothly. I'm glad we got through them because they wanted everything done by the twenty-fifth of August. So at least we got that behind us, and now all we have to do is present our revised edits and, uh, we'll be on our way. Good evening, Joy.
Hi, sorry I'm late.
Late to the party?
Yeah, sorry.
We're just wrapping up. We had E-code, uh, edits early on and we just finished up with a building permit and communications, et cetera.
Okay, anything that I should note to the select board?
Um, nope, you're probably going to get a letter anyway. We waived our right of first refusal on the Charles Fisher property that is being taken out of chapter.
Okay.
But that, you'll get that anyway, probably at your next meeting.
Okay.
Paul, one, one topic that I would like to bring up and maybe for another meeting, but something to inquire about is we historically had collected money towards the hot, the sidewalk fund?
Yes.
Right? Whatever happened to that? Has that, where have those funds been?
It's in a, it's in a, uh, special fund at the accountant's office. Just sitting there. Um, we had had this discussion some time back where we thought that and, and there really isn't, in terms of what we're going to get for our money, um, it's not a lot, I guess, from what you told us before, but there might be some small things to do, but it is, it is there. It just hasn't.
Do you know what that total is?
I don't off the top of my head. I don't.
I guess.
It could be forty, fifty thousand, something like that.
Right, and I guess where I'm going with this is, I, I know we talked about this discussion before, but in terms of utilizing those funds for some kind of sidewalk construction, that's what it's there for. And maybe we have a discussion in another meeting to, so whose discretion is it for those funds to be utilized, uh, for some work in town? Is that?
You know, actually, now, now that I think of it, Paul, when we had this discussion before, I'll have to look back in my file that I have a lot of papers in, but I asked Randall about that, and he gave areas where they had a priority list of things they needed to be done. He provided one, and I could, I could probably pull that up, but again, for what we have, I don't know how much we're going to be able to, uh, contribute to what, what the needs are, but I'll, I'll look into it.
Right, and I understand that it's relatively small, but I, I, I guess it's worthwhile to look into it. I mean, can you do a small project for that?
Yeah.
Point is.
And I think the point you brought up before, Paul, was that with inflation, you know, are the, the amount of money there, what you're going to get for your money is dwindling as, as time goes on.
Yeah, not only inflation, but prevailing wage
Sure.
takes a hit and
Yeah.
One, one discussion, I, I mean, I'm not trying to make this longer than it needs to be because of this is not a topic of discussion that's composed.
No, that's fine.
So for another time, maybe we can bring this as a, as a discussion point, solicit public feedback of some sort on those funds to be utilized towards something. I guess the question is, who ultimately has the discretion?
I'm pretty sure it's, it's Randall because of the, uh, construction end of it, highway. He's in charge of sidewalks as well.
Right, we don't have many sidewalks in town, so I'm, I'm wondering, uh, you know, is there?
Well, I think Dan, I think Dan had mentioned it, if I recall correctly, back when we had the discussion, that there might be some areas where you've got some ADA compliance that you could do for some, some of this money in certain areas at certain sidewalks or intersections or something.
Yeah, I think we talked about perhaps using the funding for crosswalks. That seemed to be one area where the money may be able to be effect, more effective than the amount of sidewalk we would get for our money. So something to think about when we talk about it.
Oh, cool.
Putting sidewalks, crosswalks in, typically you want to have some kind of study to, I'm not saying you need to study for a sidewalk, but in terms of crossing, that certainly warrants an engineering judgment call. But going back to, to the sidewalk thing, is that something that we can fire about with Randall on, on? He's got, that's something that we can get his feedback on?
Yeah, I, I'll look up that last communication I had with him because he did, he did give me a list of it. And I'll pull it up and copy everybody on it, and then, uh, I'll find out from Brad, the accountant, what the actual amount is in that, uh, fund. And then we can move on it. All right.
Do you have something in mind, Paul?
Oh, I always do, but, uh, um.
Motive.
It's good.
Look, I, I, I have a lot of different thoughts that are, uh, well, just the, just as a tangent here, it's, it's been surprisingly quiet. And I know the economy's probably, uh, a serious damper on development, uh, building, residential developments per se. I know we have a couple in town, but it's not as hot as it was a few years ago. Uh, the market in terms of, in terms of subdivision developments, but I guess the point I'm trying to make is, um, on future projects, you know, look at, look for opportunities for us to leverage, um, private development to help us get somewhere with with our goals of sidewalks in the community and not to violate any mass general laws with respect to, you know, general betterments to, to the community and such that, that might be violated with the asks that we have, but instead to work with developer to utilize private funds to help us. Um, if there's private funds in lieu of sidewalk, things of that sort for us to, 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 to get something out of a project and right now, we're working with, you know, uh, from a tangent. My, my company's working for a private developer elsewhere in the state and these communities are leveraging private development, uh, projects that don't have to meet prevailing wage, uh, that can be done much quicker by a private entity than a, uh, public, uh, sector agency or department. Just some fruitful thought on future potential projects, and I know it's been quiet on, on the development front, but that's something certainly we can discuss and go from there.
Sure, absolutely. All right, I'll check that out and, uh, get something coming forward. Um.
Maybe a question for Joy, I'm sorry. Joy, is there any, um, anything, so these funds that we have in, in the public, sidewalk fund, right, that, that came from private development projects that contributed in lieu of construction? Is there anything that would prevent us from making a contribution to a, let's say if there was a private developer that came in the place that was already doing sidewalk work and we wanted this developer to continue, um, sidewalks as part of his construction efforts and we would make a contribution? Is there anything that would prevent us from contributing towards that and not having to meet prevailing wage, such, uh, other requirements that are out there?
Offhand, I, I'm going to say I don't know because I'm not familiar with the sidewalk fund in general. Um, but I do know in regards to any project that the town is involved with, if it's over ten grand, it has to go out to bid, at least from that perspective, I know that. So it, I guess it depends on how much the, how, what the amount is, what the project is, what the agreement is. I mean, yeah, I, I don't know. I can look into it though, and I can, and ask a town administrator and the rest of the select board about that.
And just some additional food for thought, maybe the more I think about this, it probably isn't, but there are other means to sweeten the pot in terms of, um, depending on type of development, maybe tax breaks or other agreements, Tom can get into. I'm not suggesting, I'm just big picture, I'm not suggesting we give everybody tax break. I'm just suggesting that there are other means to get a project, uh, accomplished.
Yeah, I, offhand, it feels like something that would have to go to the town for a vote. It, that's what it gives me the sense of. Um, just because it's public fun, it's public monies. And mixing it in with private entities is always very tricky and definitely, uh, need approval from the town. I, I would feel to do so. Um, you know, look at our CPA funds. We can't just use those without that going to town meeting. So I, it feels like that would be a similar, I would analogize it.
Right, but then there's also, um, I, I feel like there's other means, i.e., I, I feel like, and I'm not too familiar with the tax code per se, but there's agreements that communities make, for example, a pilot program, which is payment and move taxes or, um, um, a TIF, uh, tax, uh, increment, uh, or tax incentive financing, or what's the other one, DIF? Uh, programs that are out there.
Yeah.
Look, we're talking about hypotheticals that might never happen in this town, but I'm just curious on that.
I think there was one TIF. There was one scenario. Uh, I want to say it was, was J and E Precision or something. Um, something similar in regards, because there's an industrial development over there. Um, and I think they received, there was an agreement with them. So the town has done it before a while ago.
But a TIF doesn't have to be a town vote per se. I think that's a select board action.
Yeah, it's a select board action, yeah.
That's where I'm going with this. So this is.
Yeah. Like I said, I'm, I'm not fam, really familiar because it's not something that comes up, like that whatever happened with that business was way before my time, so it's definitely something I can look into. And, and ask the town administrator and just do my own research on and bring it to the select board.
Perfect.
They may, they may be asking, you know, very specific questions. So if you have a specific project or a private entity, um, that may be helpful, but, or just, you want me to just get a general concept, like general research?
Yeah, purely, this is, this is a pure. Yeah, purely, this is, this is a pure hypothetical. I, I have not been approached. No one, I'm just thinking outside of the box. In case we ever have this potential, look, I, we, we sometimes have developments. I mean, you hear about this site here potentially, you hear about this site here in town and so on. I'm just curious. On, on, on the potential for leveraging that could be presented by a town agency or commission or whomever in the, in the town, just some general thoughts. I mean, I'm not too familiar with all what's out there, but I feel like we need to start being a little more creative as a town. And this, I'm not trying to talk out on anybody and that's not what I'm doing. I'm just saying, I feel like we're so we're, we're 30 years behind the curve here. So anyhow, I'm done talking.
Paul, you gave, you're, you gave me an idea. Maybe it's not as, as effective as what you're suggesting, but the, I see that the town has a couple of properties or projects in terms of properties coming up, like the new municipal building and the, what else do they have to build? They have to build the senior center. There might be a third building right now, but, and also for the affordable housing people are looking to build as well. Maybe the money could be lumped in to one of those projects for the sidewalks.
Right. And that's a, that's a good. But Dan, that's awesome. I, I think that's kind of the general scope of things that we're looking to provide connectivity. And frankly, I, being resident town and I see I, I feel like, and I don't know what the numbers are in this community. I, I feel like there's been an explosion of kids families in this town.
There's definitely.
Right? And we're I, I feel like our town process is changing and being a, an engineer professional that deals with safety and and, and public sector projects, I mean, I I do a lot of on-call work for the state. I, I work for a lot of private entities. I work for a lot of municipalities across the state. And seeing what other communities are doing, seeing how they're leveraging both private and public funds to achieve these projects is, is really commendable. And then I look at our town and I'm disappointed and I mean, for, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna stop talking for itself into, into a pickle here, but a- anyhow. I, I, I feel like there's a lot more we can do and I know I'm, you know, probably speaking of fire, you know, which you require.
Yeah, no, your, your heart's in the right place. We just need to, we need to do some more research, right? That's what it seems like to me and figure out how we can use these funds and more creatively to help other projects. Maybe it could be applied to the rail trail. I don't know. So just throwing ideas out there.
That's why you're on the planning board, Paul. You're, you're looking into the future. You're, you're planning. That's very good. There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, as a general statement, I appreciate, you know, Paul, you come from you come from like a professional expertise and experience that gosh darn it, I'm glad you're on the planning board. If you've seen other towns do things more creatively and more effectively and I'm, I'm disappointed sometimes with some of the stuff that we seem to be behind the times a little on. So I appreciate, I, whether it's, I guess the first step is to find out how much is in the fund and how is it earmarked? And how is it accessed? And does it require a town vote? Or is it, you know, who's in control of it? I think those are the things that aren't entirely clear right now.
So I, I think that's great. I, I think that's what we got to do. One other topic that I think we should probably start aggressively pursuing is complete street funds that MasDOT has. So this program's been around for almost 10 years or so. And if you look at these communities around us, there, there's three different types of levels that communities have where right now, if you look at Southampton, we're at level one, we just registered, we never we never proceeded. You can look at Holyoke, look at Northampton, Easthampton, South Hadley, West Springfield, Agawam for heaven's sakes. Look at these communities here that have been utilizing, they've been getting about $400,000. Seems like every other year from the state for prioritization of, of improvement product. So for example, what the town would need to do is establish a prioritization plan, meaning someone, and I could certainly develop this because I developed this for other communities in the state. I have a list of important projects that are, and need a safety, i.e. you know, we, we meet with the select board or we have some public input. We meet with select board or get Randall to chime in. We have locations where pedestrian crossings are needed on wherever. Or there's really, you know, we have, we have trend lines for sidewalk pedestrians between this neighborhood here and this neighborhood there and it's you know, a, a half a mile of sidewalk. Let's do it. We actually did this for the town of Montague last year. They got $400,000 from the state. And they basically created two different neighborhood jobs where they, they were able to put in for the most, I think, I think they put in concrete sidewalks, right, which we don't do in town. But they were able to really take advantage of of these complete streets funds and really connect neighborhoods, really be able to provide these either shared use path or sidewalks where like, look, I mean, we're, we're really behind other communities and there are funds out there to make it happen.
So I believe in our master plan, we have a section about doing exactly what you're proposing, which is upgrade and take and, and, you know, improve what we, what we don't have. Secondly, we do have a grants committee in our town. I don't know if you want to consider, you know, Chris Falls is the chair of that committee. If you just want to propose something for them to look into to see if they can access one of these grants and take advantage of it, we, that.
Yeah, I, I've worked with Chris before with the shared, not issues, but the the Greenway funding that we receive the, the, the states. Like, you know, the 400, 400,000, whatever that number was. The Greenway or the Bike Ways Committee, whatever, it's late. And that was successful. And maybe that's the path we look at is, is looking through that to implement a prioritization plan that's adopted by the select board as a course of action to, to develop opportunities for us to, to get some state funds. And frankly, like I said, $400,000 that gets you you know, given that we haven't been doing anything period with the state on the MasDOT fund in terms of complete streets. I think that's going to go a long way in the ranking. You know, particularly with, with where we are. So I say we go for it.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Paul. You know, I think if we can put our energy somewhere as a planning board in making our town, improving our town, then we're, we're doing, serving their town better than, well, I'm not saying reviewing the bylaws is not important, but if we can make positive change, anyway, I can help. I'm on board.
So like, yeah, this is the one I did for Pittsburgh a few years back. Where they established, you know, this is a different, obviously a different town or city government. They have a mayor and city council voted on that exactly, or basically this is their level one, where they identified what they're going to have as a policy, where they're going to look at sidewalks and and, 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 you know, shared use paths and so on in the city. And then what they did was they established a prioritization plan. This is actually something I did.
I just had, can I share an idea I just had? Because I think it's a good one. Maybe it's not. We could use the sidewalk funds that we have to pay someone to develop a prioritization.
We don't need to pay anyone to do this. That's something that I could easily help.
Well, thank you.
In the town. I mean, I could, this is, this is this is a waste of time for us to, to hire somebody to do this if we can do this ourselves. It's just a matter of getting people that to agree to a program.
I don't want to speak for the select board, but I know like that I would love to see more sidewalks in town. I know unfortunately our town is a very, is 90% of it is volunteer based, everything that happens in the town. And that's probably why we're 30 years behind is because we don't have a strong like municipal infrastructure to support these kinds of projects, but that's also why we're volunteering right now. And we're talking about these projects and what matter to us. So I definitely, whatever needs to be done to help this and to get the select board to support a project like this, I would be on board and I'm with Dan. I would love to help with something like this, whatever time needs to be dedicated to it. And you know, support I can get from the town and select board and, and the funding. And I think going to the grant committee is a good, great idea too, because they've had really good luck.
Right.
Good job, Paul. It's, it's very interesting. I've often wondered reading in the paper over the years about all these communities, especially Northampton gets a ton of money. Grants coming and going every time you turn around and I can't, I can't get over it. I'm scratching my head and I'm saying, why the hell doesn't Southampton get any money? You know what? There's all this money going around and it ain't coming here.
Exactly, exactly. I, I think we might need to do like a presentation or something which I don't mind doing to the select board as a discussion because they ultimately have to adopt the complete streets program plan as a town initiative. Luckily, it's just them voting, but this is the project that I was involved where you know, it was Main Street pedestrian improvements. The town got about I'm sorry, it wasn't Main Street. It was Montague Street. It was 399 is what we got. And they were able to, to, to make some serious improvements with those funds. So.
That'd be awesome. It's also a safety issue. There, with the more people that have moved into Southampton in the past 15 years, it, it's a serious safety issue that the town needs to address.
And you know, just from an execution standpoint, obviously there's prior laws and other components we need to adhere to. So in Pittsburgh, not Pittsburgh, let's talk about Montague for a second. We were able to compile plans, not like spending money, a lot of money engineering, instead of what we did as engineers, we, we develop a book job, which is basically referencing all MasDOT standards, keep the engineering class down to a minimum, but develop you know, get an aerial in place. Maybe spend some money on a surveyor to go out and lay out where this where the municipality layout line is on a on a on a street in order for us to make sure we're not encroaching or building on somebody else's property, but there are ways to, to really keep this cheap and very beneficial to the community at the same time. So, you know, I, I'm willing to help out to get this thing moving. But you know, there's a much bigger discussion you need and support from the select board to proceed.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything we can do to help. I mean, I look at, I mean, it's kind of a bad way to look at Southampton, but sometimes I feel like it's like Route 10 and it's just like the town you drive through. And if we could do something with the sidewalks in the town, maybe we can create more of a walking district or more of an area that would, that would be conducive to, to attract people to, to come to our town instead of just driving through it. I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, I'm going to look at the master plan too, Paul, because I think we can point to a very specific thing that's been in the master plan quite a long. It's consistent with exactly what you're discussing, proposing. That will give, I don't see where the select board would be against it, but it would give teeth to what you're you know, saying and, and there's just so much to do in that master plan that not everything can get done, but a lot has been moved forward. So let me look for that and I'll email you that information.
Perfect.
And can you tell me, Paul, I, I think I have two email addresses for you. Can you either email me something so I have the correct one or?
Yeah, I'll email you. It's the Gmail one.
Okay. I'll have to look it up. Somehow I always come up with two different email.
Yeah, yeah, use the Gmail one, but I'll say.
Yeah, you, you had one originally at Outlook, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, for some reason I can't access that and the strangest thing like my iPhone can't access it, but my iPad can and I'm not getting it up. Yeah.
So it's just the last name at gmail.com. That one. Okay.
Thanks for making it public.
What is your last name? Smith, right?
All right, folks. That was, that was very enlightening. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Paul.
If there are no other issues for business to conduct, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Cindy makes a motion to adjourn. Second, anyone?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor, aye, aye.
All right.
Does anyone have any, you're going to be in town in two weeks or is anyone out of town?
I'm.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.